Dilligence to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Second order of business is approval of the agenda. Councilmember Hearn, did you want to add something to the regular agenda?
Nope.
Or Hearn or Holt?
Okay.
Sorry.
Did I?
Hold, Hearn.
Yes, can we add as number sixteen, a performance review summary for Administrator Miller?
I think that would be good. Thanks for reminding, remembering that. Anything else? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Motion to approve the amended agenda?
Second.
Motion is second for approval of the amended agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Agenda is hereby approved. Approval of minutes from June third, two thousand and twenty-five. Is there anything that's outstanding? If we're good with it, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the minutes from June third.
Motion to approve minutes from June third, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. We get to the public comments and inquiries. We do have one gentleman that would like to speak today. Please, when I say your name, come to the podium. State your name and address for the record. You'll have six minutes if needed. And would Paul Fitzpatrick, please, come forward?
Mayor Cadenhead, city council members. On June second of this year, I sent out an email request to my neighbors at the Fields at Arbor Glen, the independent living town homes and apartments right behind you on Thirty-Ninth Street, requesting that I speak to the city council on their behalf. And a significant majority of my neighbors said yes, they would approve what I had to say to the city council, which I wrote out for them. And so they all agreed that I should say the following to you. On behalf of your neighbors at the Fields at Arbor Glen, I thank the leaders of our town of Lake Elmo for the construction of the crosswalk and the signage with it. We know that this will not make all autos on Thirty-Ninth Street stop when we cross, but it is a start. Thanks to our leaders, hearing the needs of citizens and responding to our request. What's next, you may ask? You never know what motivated senior citizens can do. So stay tuned. Thank you.
Thank you. Don't believe we have any presentations this evening. Our consent agenda reads as the following. Number two, approve payments and dispersments. Number three, approve state performance measures. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash zero four seven. Number four, approve crossroads east first edition landscape security reduction. Number five, approve hiring of public works operator. Number six, approve special event permit for Fourth of July parade. Number seven, approve CDA grant for ULI TAP. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash zero four four. Number eight, approve pay request number four for well number two PFOS water treatment plant. Number nine, approve change order number one for well number two PFOS water treatment plant. Number ten, approve pay request number three for well number two PFOS removal equipment. Number eleven, approve change order number two for the Hudson Boulevard improvements, segment A. Number twelve, approve pay request number four for the Hudson Boulevard improvements, segment A. I'll entertain a motion on approval of the consent agenda as written, read.
So moved.
Support.
All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda is hereby approved. Getting into our regular agenda. Number thirteen is set sale resolution, two thousand and twenty-five bond issuance, resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash zero four five. Is this yours? All right.
Get my mic on. I will very quickly introduce Tammy Amdal of Northland Security, but just as some quick background on our bond issuance tonight. This is solely for the two thousand and twenty-five street improvement project. The total bond issuance will be two million, one hundred and eighty-five thousand, which is about a million less than what we originally planned for this project because the project was significantly cheaper than we had expected. So the bond sale is set, tentatively set for July fifteenth. In addition to the bond resolution, there's also a motion to approve the service agreement with Northland for thirty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars and fifty cents. Tammy, take it away.
Mayor, council, good evening. Tammy Amdal with Northland Public Finance, serving as advisor to the city on the sale of the bonds. Tonight is the start of the process. This resolution calls for the sale of the bonds. The actual sale of the bonds would happen on July fifteenth. Clarissa, Finance Director, reviewed the purpose of it and noted that this amount is smaller than what was originally anticipated. The pledge on the bonds will be property tax levy and special assessment. There are no utility or enterprise revenue bonds as part of this. It's solely related to streets, so that's also a change from more recent history for Lake Elmo. With respect to interest rates, for purposes of planning and tonight, the estimated true interest cost, which is the basis that we would use to evaluate the bids that are received on July, is estimated at four point one eight percent for planning purposes. The actual rate will depend on market conditions on the date of the sale. We are recommending, as in the past, that the city seek a rating on these bonds. And the current rating outstanding from Moody's is double A one, so that will be part of the process. And when I am here on July fifteenth, I can speak to the results of that rating review process. With that, mayor and council, there is a resolution before you calling for the sale of the bonds and the approximate amount of two million, one hundred and eighty-five thousand. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have for me.
Questions for Ms. Amdal? All right. No questions at this time, thank you. We do have a recommendation, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash zero four five. Resolution providing for competitive negotiated sale of two million, one hundred and eighty-five thousand, general obligation improvement bonds, series two thousand and twenty-five A.
Second.
Motion and second, discussion. Councilmember Jagicich.
I'm not opposed to the sale of the bonds. I'm not supporting the two million, one hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. We levied special levis for this year, six hundred thousand dollars for street maintenance levy and ninety-three thousand dollars for our improvement reserve fund levy. We did that because we're trying to get our debt level down. We have sixty million dollars outstanding debt. Based on our CIP and our discussion then, our debt would rise to about sixty-five million and come back down to sixty million ten years from now. We're, the impact of that debt is significant on our residents and businesses. We levy about, little over five million dollars to pay our operating costs. Public works, public safety, fire, all the normal city operations, with the exception of our utilities. We levy a little over three million dollars just to make the debt service payments on our outstanding bonds. So if we didn't have that debt, our property taxes would be one-third lower than they are right now. So I would like to see us, I know we have to fund our capital improvement, but I'd like to see us use the money we've levied to reduce the amount of that bond and reduce the fiscal impact of debt service on our residents and try and get that burden down. We need to get that debt level down over some period of time, over the next ten years, to something much more reasonable, like thirty million. We can't be in the sixty million range forever and ever and ever. And I know we can't solve that problem tonight. But if you remember during our CIP, we talked about getting that debt down. And that was what the purpose of the levis were. And so I support us selling a bond. I just think we need to reduce it by about seven hundred thousand dollars and take the money we've levied and use that to reduce the debt. By reducing that debt, you know, we would save about a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars in debt service payments over the life of the bond.
Over the life of the bonded?
Yep.
I can't recall, what's, what is the bond life?
I mean, we saw a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars in interest, a hundred and eighty-three thousand, six hundred and forty-nine, based on the estimate. And, and we'd save about ninety-three, ninety-one thousand dollars a year in debt service, based on the estimate. So about a hundred thousand dollars a year less in debt service, which we won't have to levy on our residents and businesses. I mean, as we look at our CIP coming in, I think would be incumbent on us to develop a plan to get that debt level down. We're better off to actually levy more dollars and save the interest costs than to keep selling two, four, five, six million every year, after some plan. But I, as I said, when we put those levis in place, it was specifically to reduce our debt level. And I think we should apply it to that because that's what we told folks during the truth and taxation hearing. Yes?
Sorry. If I could clarify, the street maintenance fund levy is for street maintenance, specifically mill and overlays.
Seal codes.
Thank you, seal coating. The only portion that we levied for major projects is the infrastructure reserve, four oh nine, for ninety-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars. And the CIP document that was adopted specifically stated that this project would be bonded for. So using that cash is not part of the long, the long-term plan that I have. And I would also address that the strategy that we've been talking about isn't fully adopted nor fully thought out. That's part of that long-term strategic financial plan that we've been kind of working towards. So yes, it is in the plan going forward. We do not have the levis to support that right now.
So the six hundred thousand dollars that we levied for streets is chip seals and maintenance round, that's for public works department to be used?
Right.
Is it?
That's spent.
During two thousand and twenty-five, it's, it's spent?
It's spent.
Okay, all right.
So, so we spent the six hundred thousand dollars in two thousand and twenty-five already on street maintenance?
Correct.
Interesting, because in the, in our budget, it says it's for capital.
It's for...
Just for capital expenditures in our budget.
Well, we're gonna, the, so the street maintenance fund is set up as a capital fund in that it's a larger project fund. We moved away from doing the large transfers out of the general fund into more of this CIP type setup. But it is like large maintenance type items.
And what did we spend it on in two thousand and twenty-five? Six hundred thousand dollars.
I'm gonna let Nate speak to that.
Yep, so it's, it's not completely spent, spent. But it's gone to the Reed Park parking lot. And then the rest of it's going to, as Finance Director stated, Millen overlay project that's coming later this year and chip seals and crack fill projects.
So why would the Reed Park parking lots come from the park fund? As opposed to the street fund? Why would we pay them from a street fund?
I'm not entirely positive about that, but how much was the street and the Millen overlay project?
It's, it's still actually being scoped, but we anticipate it's gonna be on the order of, you know, four hundred thousand dollars, three hundred thousand dollars.
Wasn't that, wasn't there more, a larger project that was almost a million dollars?
I'm not recalling.
Okay. We can, we can review that. But my understanding is that in, within the last couple of years, that we've kind of maxed out that street maintenance expenditures from those projects.
That money's budgeted for projects this year already. Okay.
And, and so, I guess I just, when I read it and said, capital outlay, I assumed that meant capital outlay.
Yeah. Well, I would consider the, maybe it's just a nuance in the jargon, right? And I can certainly understand the, the, reading it that way. But as long as we know that that money is outlaid for the maintenance of, for public works department on our system and, you know, we can talk at a different time if that money for, for a parking lot, which would be a city parking lot, whether it's parks and rec or city function to me is a, it's just, you know, it's just moving, it's the same amount of money, it's gonna be gone somewhere, so. And, and that parking lot is definitely in need of it, so.
And then we have stormwater improvements included in all of these projects, and they're not being paid from the stormwater utility fund. We're gonna bond for them as well.
The...
All of the streets have stormwater improvements.
Also for MS four and cleanouts and things of that.
It's not to replace catch bases and storm pipes?
Not generally.
In the stormwater fund?
Not that I'm aware of. That, that gets done, somebody can correct me if I'm wrong. That's part of capital, like, projects that get designed get done.
Well, this is a capital project, this stormwater project.
Right, right, but I don't think that's...
And it's have stormwater components.
Stormwater fund pays for like MS four and cleanouts and maintaining the system that's in place, not necessarily redoing pipes or the pipes that are part of a project. I don't think that, I don't think you're, when we're doing our city projects, like we would in a state project, that the, the funding is coming from different buckets. I think it's coming from the one bucket. And the drainage system is in there, but it's not part of, that doesn't get paid from the stormwater fee.
So we pay for water components and sewer components from those utilities, but we don't pay for stormwater improvements from the stormwater utility? Like, we're putting in, replacing that culvert
That's, that's correct.
And we're paying for that from the stormwater utility.
That's as I understand it.
We're, we're replacing a culvert on Hudson Road, and we're paying for that from the stormwater utility. It's in the CIP. When I ask the question, it's four hundred, about four hundred thousand dollars.
Which one, and the one we just, that we're approving tonight for the...
Yep, that's coming from the stormwater utility. It's a stormwater pipe, part of a street project.
I guess then I'm, I'm confused.
Typically, a city uses stormwater utility, pay for stormwater utility improvements.
Yeah. Yes, Clarissa?
To next point, that, that's correct. So it's, it's not that we don't pay for CIP projects, it's just that we don't normally break those stormwater expenses out of the street projects. That's not to say that we can't. I personally feel like it's maybe a little bit of overcomplicating the, the, for no reason in that everyone in the city uses the stormwater and it's kind of funded largely equitably across the city, whereas water and sewer are very specific to those people, those users. Only some properties have water, only some properties have sewer.
Right.
Everybody pays for stormwater.
Right.
I guess my experience is different, but I, and we have the ninety-three thousand dollars we levied to put into the infrastructure fund, that's specifically for infrastructure.
Right, and as I understand it, isn't that a pot of money that we set aside? And that, that should be growing, right?
Yes, and so in theory, the long-term plan shows us, well, the long-term plan that is in the works with our, with our CIP, essentially, the goal is to even out the levy, get, get these pots of money started and figure out how we can decrease debt using that pot and comparing to this giant list of projects that Nate sends over to me every year. So that's sort of what, what we're doing and what we're gonna talk about at the workshop in July is all of these projects, where's the funding coming from? What do these CIP levis need to look like moving forward? So that we can kind of get us to where we need to go and get to that, that decrease in debt over time. So, I mean, the decrease in debt already, the impacts, you know, just, just being able to, you know, decrease the project scope, just having the conversation about, you know, sort of this, moving in that direction. You know, we've, we've got the, the utility studies, so we're choosing to use cash on a number of those things. So overall, as a percentage of projects, we're definitely lev, we're bonding for fewer projects than we have in the past. The two million, two point one million versus, what was it, five million last year? So, we're headed in the right direction.
And what's, and what's planned for next year? Eight million in the CIP?
I don't have that right in front of me, but yeah.
I just think we spent a lot of time talking about trying to get it down, and here we are, you know, bonding again and not bring any additional levy money into it.
Well, I think we've, we've already, what I'm understanding, Councilmember Jagicich, is that the levied money is accounted for in projects that are being used in the city. So that money, that six hundred and ninety-three thousand indicated from the levy is accounted for maintenance and chip seals, crack sealing, things of that nature in our city.
I didn't get the, well, of the six hundred thousand that they talked about in Fund four oh eight, which was to avoid transfer from the general fund to cover those projects, they said they had about four hundred thousand dollars. But I guess I, I just think that we were going down a different path, and it's not the path I thought we agreed to when we did this levy. But, you know, I'm just one voice. And I think, I think we'll be, you know, backed up, three million dollar plus levy for debt service and forty, thirty-five percent of our tax is going to pay debt. Don't, not so sure that's doing our residents a favor.
I think as we progress forward and decrease the amount that we bonded versus what has been bonded in the past, we will see incremental gains on that, on decreasing the debt levy.
Well, if you look at...
Certainly, it would be nice to get rid of it all in one fell swoop, but I don't know that that's financially feasible.
Well, our CIP actually, like I said, raises our debt to sixty-five million and comes back down to sixty million ten years from now.
We have a chance to review the CIP this year in the next workshop. Any other discussion? All right. We'll call the question. All those in favor of resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash zero four five, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nate?
All right. Resolution passes three one.
Motion to approve of the municipal services agreement with Northland Securities, Inc.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. All those in favor of the, why am I, where's my? Excuse me. Page moved. All those in favor of approve the municipal service agreement with Northland Securities, Inc., please signify by saying aye.
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 Any nays? Hearing none, motion passes. Item fourteen, approve plans and specifications and order add for bids for I ninety-four lift station and force main improvements. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash zero four six.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I'm back before you tonight with an item to approve the plans and specifications for the lift station and force main improvements to the I ninety-four lift station. As you recall, this is the force main that runs along Hudson Boulevard and Inwood Avenue that has experienced a number of breaks over the last decade and is, has exceeded its useful service life. So I'm here asking for, to move that next step and, and order, order bids. So just a few things tonight I'm gonna talk about. We'll go over the location, the scope, the schedule and the budget. And then I also do have, it was just referenced here in the previous discussion, but there has been an addition to this project to replace a failing culvert that is right in close proximity with the lift station. The project, the culvert project was a separate CIP project this year that we're simply adding now to take advantage of the fact that we're gonna be opening up the road to do this work. So we'll get to that, too. So the location of the lift station is actually down on Hudson Boulevard, east of Eagle Point Boulevard. And the, the force main runs from this lift station westward to Inwood Avenue and then south to an existing Met Council discharge location. So right now, it ties in with the Met Council force main, and that's what it's going to do in an interim condition when it's reconstructed. But the Met Council has a project working towards this location with a gravity sewer line that this will ultimately discharge to. One thing, it's, it's a little hard to see, I know, on the, on the aerial. You'll notice that the red line, that's the existing path of the force main. There's a crossing of Inwood Avenue that is slightly farther south than what we're proposing now. And that is to, the, the existing line has to remain in service while we build the new one. So we need to offset that crossing in order to keep everything undisturbed. So we're replacing approximately three thousand feet of, of the eight-inch force main. The eight-inch force main material is a PVC pipe. I think I shared some photos of the pipe condition in a previous presentation. And through analysis of ultimate flows in the area, we've determined that the line should actually be upsized to a sixteen-inch line. Now, that's sixteen-inch outside diameter, slightly smaller inside. But the pipe material we're going with this time is a high-density polyethylene. So this is a thicker walled material, and it's really the standard for all force mains that are, that are bored in these days. The material that was put in before, I know there are some questions and concerns about that, so I just wanted to reassure council that we are, are using something different that, that should sustain and have a, a longer life. So the upsizing was based on a review of the ultimate service area. So all that area kind of north of, of the lift station eventually is gonna come there. You know, it's only, the area's only been partially developed. So working with planning staff, you know, we determined that in order to meet the service, the future service flows, the sixteen-inch main was, was appropriate. We did also review the lift station components, the, the controls, electrical system. And it was determined that new pumps will be needed to control and, or to, to, to transmit the sewage in, in the new force main. Now, those pumps will not work with the existing force main. The existing force main will not work with these new pumps. So that was originally, you may recall from a previous, from when we brought this aside before, but that was previously something we were unsure of, and it was not included in the scope, that cost was not. I'll get to costs here farther down the presentation and talk about the plan to procure those pumps and what costs are associated with that. But the pumps will, the new pumpings, or the new pumps will be appropriate for the new line in the interim and final condition. And when I say interim, that's the new main hooked to the Met Council force main that exists today, which it will have to for some period of time, as well as when the gravity line is there for us to connect to. Lastly, there, during development of the Amira site, which is just north of Hudson Boulevard there, kind of where the, the lift station is, it was discovered that there was a ninety-inch corrugated metal culvert going beneath Hudson Boulevard that was starting to rot out. And when I say rot out, I mean rust, crumble, collapse. And it was brought, it was put into the CIP last year as an emergency project. And initially, you know, staff not knowing that these two projects would intersect like this, were, were investigating a trenchless solution, so lining the pipe. Also working with the watershed district, it was determined that the pipe was oversized for what it actually needs to be. It does not need to be ninety inches. And through some analysis, it was determined a seventy-two, a seventy-two inch pipe would serve the drainage needs of the area. So looking, so moving farther, as, as, as the lift station project progressed and we found out how the pipes are configured out there, it just made sense since we have to open the road up to, to bring in the force main into the lift station to also install this culvert while the road is, is closed. And just do one closure, get rid of everything, take care of everything, and then open it back up, so we should be good in the area for years to come. The big thing is the force main... The big thing is the, uh, force main actually goes underneath the existing ninety inch culvert and it, and it will need to go back underneath the new culvert. Because if you think of seventy-two inches, that's how tall I am, okay? It's six feet. So there's not a lot of room between the roadbed and the top of this culvert. And so that pipe needs to continue underneath, otherwise we run into cover issues and there's also just a web of utilities above it. So I'm back here, uh, before you today on June seventeenth, looking for plan authorization and, um, and bid authorization. If, if we move forward, the, uh, we're, we'll be accepting bids on July eighth and then coming back to Council on July fifteenth, uh, with a recommendation for contract award. The project is anticipated to start a couple of weeks after that in, in early August and be substantially complete by mid-October with any sort of final completion, um, by the end of the year. So at the time that I was preparing this, uh, presentation and, and council item, we didn't have, um, really hard exacting costs, uh, for the improvements. We had our CIP, our, our CIP budget, uh, for the force main is nine hundred thousand dollars and for the culvert is four hundred thousand. So one point three million. Now, knowing that we don't wanna, those funds are specific for those improvements, you know, we, we really had to be careful. So, um, I've, I've just got some numbers I'll share with Council. The total estimated project cost right now is about nine hundred and forty thousand dollars. So that's the force main and the culvert. Splitting those out, the force main is anticipated to be approximately six hundred and fifteen thousand and the culvert approximately three hundred and twenty-five thousand. When contingencies and engineering is applied across these projects equally as, or as it should prorate, um, it pretty much works out exactly to nine hundred thousand and four hundred thousand. The one thing on here that's not within this budget that I want to talk about is the pumps. So there are three pumps that need to be, uh, installed, three new pumps that need to be installed in the lift station. We have a quote, um, from a pump supplier to, to, um, sell those to us for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I anticipate coming back to Council at a future meeting, uh, with a plan, uh, for the, for, to procure those pumps and a little more information. But, um, right now, that number, I just want to make very clear, is not included in this one point three million dollar CIP number.
Was that one pump?
That's three pumps.
That was for three?
Yeah.
That was the price?
Yep. Um, before I get to the recommendation, I want to talk about this project in a little more detail. I'm, I'm gonna jump back right to here. Um, this is the best map I've got for us right now because this will entail a fairly significant closure, um, at the lift station site. Uh, the road Hudson Boulevard will need to be closed for, we're anticipating upwards of a month. So three to four weeks is, 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 is a pretty rosy estimate, we think. But, um, but we think, um, that should, that closure will allow for both the culvert install as well as the, um, installation of the force main, to, to the lift station and, and other work, uh, as necessary to adjust utilities. There is a, um, traffic control plan that detours cars from Hudson Boulevard up Julia Avenue to Fifth Street and over to Inwood. Um, now, you may be thinking, what about those businesses there, about the machine shed and those other buildings over there, the hotel? Um, westbound, uh, or, uh, or I'm sorry, um, yes, no, what, that, that, um, westbound lanes, uh, on Hudson Boulevard between Inwood and, um, Eagle Point Boulevard and Circle will remain open during construction. So there will be access there, um, while the work is going on.
Just as a one-way or controlled?
That would be a one-way. But you'll be able to get out via Eagle Point up to Fifth.
Yeah.
Yep.
Nick, the, the, the schematic there shows the new, the new force main underneath the roadway, but I'm assuming it's not gonna need to be underneath the roadway?
Uh, actually, it is going to be underneath the roadway.
So all that road needs to be redone?
Nope, there, it's gonna be boarding.
Oh, that's right.
There'll be pits, there'll be localized pits. Now, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll speak to that a little bit, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. The issue is, there's been so many breaks on the existing force main, that's a plastic pipe, that it's virtually impossible to trace the location of that pipe and locate it. Public Works has, uh, they know where breaks have occurred. But, you know, seeing as how the road's kind of got a curve, a linear, um, you know, geometry as you come around there, we don't have good information where the existing force main is and, and we have to make sure that that pipe stays in service while the new force main goes in. So as a factor of safety, we're moving that pipe into that northern part of the roadway.
Okay.
There will be, like I said, there will be limited patching, but a wholesale reconstruction of the road or, or even, uh, you know, a large amount of replacement is not anticipated. And we are aware that's a new roadway and this is a bummer, you know? With that, um, I'm asking Council to consider approving a resolution, approving plans and specifications and ordering the advertisement for bids for the I ninety-four lift station force main improvements.
Questions for Mr. Stanley, uh, Councilmember Heard?
Did you, what would the price look like if these were done at separate times? So if we decided not to do both at the same time, then what kind of price tag are we looking at for that culvert later on?
Right, so I'll, 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 I'll say a couple of things. Right now, I think I've mentioned this to Council before this year, we're in a very favorable bidding environment all across the metro area. So I, I, and, and when you package these together, you get to take advantage of kind of an economy of scale, um, especially when you're talking about, you know, traffic control, patching the road, mobilization costs for a contractor to come in and, and working around all the utilities that are gonna need to be worked around and put in this culvert. I, I think that if you separated the culvert out and did it under a separate project, and, and, and this culvert, I'll, 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 I'll say again, is, you know, it needs to be replaced. It's, it's, it's rusted, it's, it's, it's rotting. It, 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 it would cost more money, a standalone project for the culvert, you know, would definitely cost a little more. Um, as far as the lift station goes, it's hard to say. Um, it's kind of a specialty when we get into boring, uh, pipes, you know, large diameter, force main. Um, it's, it's, it's not something that every contractor does. But, um, I definitely think that packaging them together, you'll get a more favorable price for both projects.
I know it's challenging, but I mean, with the culvert, I mean, I, do you think, are we talking double the price? Are we talking fifty percent?
I don't know about double. I think you could assume anywhere between fifteen and twenty percent though, you know, reasonably.
And kind of lifespan, if we didn't do it, when do you see it failing and needing to be replaced?
That's the, that's the million dollar question, right? You know, the, the engineering that's been, and inspection that's been done on the pipe gives us, you know, um, gives us pause because we can see the inside of the pipe, we can't see the deterioration on the outside of the pipe and that's also a major factor here. Uh, we suspect there's voids that have developed because of, you know, when a pipe gets holes in it, moisture runs through those holes and it, and just can create like an unstable conditioner on the pipe, which in turn can create an unstable condition, um, in the roadway. So we feel like this open cutting and replacing the pipe is a much more, um, uh, it, 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 it gives us a higher degree of certainty of, of a successful rehabilitation than like lining the pipe. And lining the pipe, believe it or not, with a pipe that diameter or that size would probably be more expensive than just open cutting it in the situation we're in now.
And if it's, I, you know, again, I'm just thinking down the road, I, I don't know what, if the right term is if it fails, is that more of an emergency type situation where then we have to act quickly?
It absolutely becomes an emergency.
Obviously not as much of a favorable bid at that point.
Right now, what we're doing is we're being intentional and proactive and when you get put into an emergency situation, you're forced to be reactive.
Yeah.
And you're not able to do the best that you can. So that's what, that's why we're looking at this in the way we are now.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Stanley. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash zero four six, approving the plans and specifications and ordering the advertisement for bids for the I ninety-four lift station and force main improvements.
Motion and second discussion. Councilmember Dragojic?
I'd like to point out the fallacy in our argument. It's okay to pay for the storm pipe replacement from the stormwater utility, but not the storm pipe replacements on the street improvement projects. Seems like there's, you know, it's, it's a convenience of choice, not, you know, clear and concise direction. And I'll let it go with that.
I guess I would, uh, I would agree. I didn't know that, that, that they were separately that way. And, uh, certainly we can address that future. We're at a time now when we don't really get a choice on fixing this. It's required, so, uh, I'm, I'm in favor of doing it. And your, your, your point is not lost on me, Councilmember Dragojic. Any other comments? Discussion. Councilmember Holtz?
I was just gonna say a thank you to staff for, number one, being able to fast track this, do the due diligence on it to make sure that we are fully aware and cognizant of it because the report was thorough, number one, because the public needs to know as well. Why is that road about to be closed for another month? Like, they're gonna be asking the questions, validly so. So this, there's a very thorough presentation, we need that information. It still defies belief that, that force main failed as many times as it did. It defies belief and I, we had a thorough discussion about it last time around. We still don't know the answers and that, that's the troubling part. But the fact that it's going to the sixteen inch and now is, as far as we can tell, the best material now in the year twenty twenty-five, that's what we have to do. I'd rather do it right the first time, well, second time now, but this is what we do.
Better not be a third time's a charm thing.
Seriously, don't, don't, don't. But I, I do appreciate staff's time on this because it needs to be done correctly.
I'll say, you know, and thank you for answering the questions and just try to get a little bit more information and, because it is, you know, it's always more of those, you know, do we want to do it now, do we want to wait? And, and usually this is the situation where if the opportunity presents itself and that repair is gonna be, um, needed in the near future and, um, like you said, could be more of an emergent situation. I, I think being proactive, unfortunately, it's a four hundred thousand dollar proactive decision, but, um, probably better than what it would be if two, three years down the road and then more road closures and, um, the hassle with that. So I, I do appreciate the proactivity and our, uh, the proactive approach, um, and, and seeing that, um, including this in, in the presentation tonight.
All right. I'll call the question. All those in favor of Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash zero four six, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Item number fifteen, Inwood Eighth Edition Preliminary Plat, PUD and Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash one two, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero four eight, twenty twenty-five dash zero four nine and twenty twenty-five dash zero five zero.
All right, uh, good evening, Mayor, members of the Council. So we're here to, tonight to talk about Inwood, uh, Town Homes or Inwood Eighth Edition, Eighth Edition of Inwood, rather. A preliminary plat, planned unit development and comprehensive plan amendment have been requested by MNI Homes. So, um, just to talk a little bit more precisely about the planned unit development request, this project has come forward with a request for private roads and some other flexibility requests for the, uh, town home units that are proposed with this part of the project. Getting into the land use side of things here, uh, the zoning map is up on the screen. Uh, currently, this entire project area is zoned high density residential. It is shown to have a PUD overlay currently, although I will note that as staff have gone back and reviewed all of the approvals for this area, uh, there are no existing PUD flexibilities or benefits that were previously granted through other approvals. So you're looking at effectively kind of like a fresh, um, opportunity with this PUD for, for those flexibilities. We've also looked at the shoreline overlay, understanding there's a, a small amount of the project area in that, city shoreline overlay and, um, have effectively ruled out i- issues with that part of the ordinance. On the comprehensive plan side of things, uh, this site in the city's twenty thirty comprehensive plan was guided for what was then called urban high density, which allowed a, a mix of units between a range of seven point five and fifteen units per acre. The twenty forty comprehensive plan kind of split the guidance for this area, um, into a mix of different categories, including the high density residential district, mixed-use commercial district and the business park district. And so this project is, uh, requesting to come, to bring everything back to the same future land use guidance, uh, which is now called high density residential. Uh, and the density range, the ceiling of that density range is the same as it was, uh, in the prior comp plan. So looking at the background, um, Inwood was, at the time, it was approved the largest PUD that the city had approved at that point. It was to be built in a number of different phases. Uh, initially, it was approved in December of twenty fourteen. Uh, there was an EAW, an environmental assessment worksheet that was completed for the project and is still considered to be in effect. Uh, at that time, the EAW envisioned, uh, a number of different units in, in the areas that weren't single-family detached, so you can see those on the screen. In short, it anticipated more units than are proposed now. Inwood, uh, first through fifth editions, those are the single-family parts of the project. They were approved and, and have been built, uh, largely within the span of twenty fifteen to twenty seventeen. And, uh, Inwood Sixth Edition was, it was and is the QuickTrip site. So on the screen, you can see the proposed preliminary plat. You can see, um, one lot for the proposed apartment building that's on the west side of the project and then all of the individual attached townhome lots. Here's a, another, um, plan view. This is the landscaping plan. It kind of shows you a little bit more of the, the spacing on the development. We'll talk about some of the particulars here that are being proposed as I get through the presentation. Uh, looking at the PUD minimum criteria, this project does meet those standards for a PUD. The city also has objectives that PUDs have to meet in its ordinance and so those are shown on the screen and we can talk about those, uh, if you have any questions about which ones would apply. In reviewing the preliminary plat, we look at a variety of different standards, as you know, uh, starting with land use, uh, the bulk standards like setbacks and that, uh, that type of thing. Landscaping, grading, stormwater, wetlands, public infrastructure and parks, to name a few. Looking at the bulk standards, uh, there are a couple of requirements that are shown in, in blue that are being requested for flexibility. This is not very uncommon with the way that this type of townhome development is being platted, where you have individual lots that are surrounding the individual attached townhome units. The multifamily dwelling, the apartment building, uh, is on a lot that is, um, basically too small, uh, according to the city code, at approximately sixteen hundred square feet per unit. And I would also point out that the impervious surface coverage for the attached townhome side of the project, the entire project is about sixty percent, which is under the city's maximum. But on an individual basis, those units which have a small lot around them, um, are higher at about eighty-four percent of the top end. We have a couple of setbacks, uh, flexibilities that are requested in order to plat the development in this manner. There's also lastly here, a, a setback to a public road, Fifth Street North. Uh, that's from the front of the units to the actual curb that, uh, uh, flexibility is being requested for. Uh, but because of the orientation of those units, staff do not have, uh, concerns with that setback. The buildings will actually front, um, all of the public streets that surround this project. So here you can see, uh, the units that are proposed are double-fronted, meaning that, um, on, for example, on the Fifth Street North side of the project, you'll have the units facing with a public kind of face towards the, the public street corridor. And then internal to the development, that's where you have the kind of, uh, the rear loaded, we'll call it, uh, townhomes. So, uh, this project was informed by some of the specific performance standards that are in the city's ordinance and in the design standards manual. Uh, for single-family attached townhomes, uh, buildings need to be smaller than ten units without a CUP, front a public street or receive a conditional use permit. No parking lot in front yards and shared open spaces have to be equal to or greater than three hundred square feet per year. No parking lot in front yards and shared open spaces have to be equal to or greater than three hundred square feet per unit. For apartment buildings, parking cannot be located in front yard areas and common open spaces also need to be provided for those units. Here's your design standards manual. So we look at both site and building design. Getting into just the attached town homes for design, those are shown on the screen in that red box. So thinking about the building placement, the the project has been revised over the course of the review period, starting in, basically in the new year and up until now, to make sure that the project most closely is able to meet the or conform with the city's standards. So the building placement was one of those points of conversation. The buildings are now oriented towards the public street wherever it's possible. The unit types are basically those double fronted units in order to do that. Interior to the development, the entrances of the buildings aren't on a public street because they are, the development will have private streets. Terms of the streetscape, concrete sidewalks are available to all units, but they don't necessarily run along a public street. There is a more traditionally designed street that runs through this development that was added as part of a redesign. So buildings along most of the other streets will have driveways facing the private private road. In terms of landscaping, we think about preservation of the existing trees along that Fifth Street North corridor in addition to having overstory trees where we can include them in the actual, in internal to the attached town home area. So here is one rendering of those attached town home units. When we look at the actual building design standards for those units, we're looking at the form and the facade, the materials for the project or the buildings. In this case, the project is showing us colors that generally are consistent with the code, but when we looked at the actual materials that are proposed, that's where we have an issue. So the city's design standards manual is pretty specific as it relates to the actual materials that can be put on a town home unit or any type of unit that's proposed in an HDR area. Well, I'll talk about that in more detail. The other parts of the design review for these units appear to be acceptable according to the manual. So on the screen, you see the, this was another rendering of the attached town home units that was provided. It's kind of tough to see on the screen, but there is a kind of a delineation in the materials. Anything that's shown in white is a fiber cement product that would be consistent with the manual. What is shaded in purple is is vinyl siding. Vinyl siding is in a list of materials in the city's design standard manual that are prohibited as like a primary facade material. In some, in some cases, cities might try to interpret their design standards to say like, if it's primary, that means it's just fifty one percent. It's got to be a majority of the of the facade. In this case, that's not how staff interpret the manual. We have a list of prohibited materials from being primary, included as a primary material on facade, whether it's, you know, ten percent or or a hundred. Those materials include vinyl siding. They also include unpainted galvanized metal, corrugated metal, plain unpainted or painted concrete block or prefabricated concrete panels. So those are the types of materials that we would not really want in any amount on a primary facade. So being that vinyl was included in that list, that is why staff identified this in the review and at this point have a condition of approval requiring that the vinyl will be switched out with a conforming material. As to what other materials that the developer has that they can incorporate, I would have to have them speak to that question. And certainly they they'd be happy to speak to that another here tonight. So looking at the apartment building, we reviewed this also for conformance. It was a little bit more straightforward. The building, streetscape, landscaping and parking all meet. Here you see another rendering of that apartment building. When we reviewed the architectural plans, the form of facade, building materials and other elements of the building all meet the city's standards.
Was there a rendering of that from Fifth Street?
They may have included it somewhere in the packet, but in the application materials, but it will look very similar from Fifth Street. There will be no parking between the building and the road and you'll have a sidewalk and landscaping between the the road and the building. But no, I don't have anything on the presentation. So parkland dedication, this development does, as you know, create a demand for parks and trails. There are two nearby parks to this project, Ivywood and Stonegate. There are no existing trail corridors that would require connections to be made by this development. So the Parks Commission did review this earlier this year and recommended cash in lieu of parkland dedication for this project. Moving on to tree preservation and landscaping, tree preservation is very simple. There are no trees to be removed, so there's no mitigation. In terms of landscaping, the overall project, you can see the landscaping plan on the screen here. The overall project meets the number of plantings that are required. One of the things that's been a point of conversation is overstory trees along the boulevards of the public streets and private roads. The private roads being, having so many driveways on them precludes the ability to meet that fifty foot spacing of overstory trees. But because a more traditionally designed street was run through the attached town home area, we are suggesting a requirement to have that be planted with fifty foot spacing. So at least some part of that, part of the development can meet. Another thing I want to mention is buffering. So when we reviewed this site, we we noticed that the Bremer Financial site to the south doesn't have any screening or landscaping of any kind. There is a power line easement area that runs through that part of the city. So it's natural that there may not be trees there, but being that there's a large parking lot, it felt like maybe there should be some screening. And so the the developer actually did go back to the drawing board in their in their resubmital and provide screening in the the new plans. Parking and circulation, so this site has, in short, enough parking with the uses that are proposed. The visitor parking for the town homes is a is a common question that's provided in the driveways for those units. And there is on street parking in the private drives throughout the the town home area. A note on access and circulation, there are existing access points along Fifth Street North and Island Trail, or no, just Fifth Street North, sorry. That's being used by this development. Island Trail will receive approved, basically an approved access location by the engineering review. There will be turn lanes required along that corridor. And lastly, staff are recommending pedestrian connections. The southeast and southwest parts of the attached town home part of this development lack a little bit of connectivity to the surrounding sidewalk network. So a lot of review comments here. City's fire department, engineer, landscape architect all reviewed and provide comment memos. The watershed district also did provide comments. Because this is a comp plan amendment, we circulated it to all affected and adjacent jurisdictions and got all the appropriate comment memos. Basically, there's no comment from any adjacent jurisdiction. This, this slide summarizes the flexibilities that are being requested by the developer for the project. We can get into this in more detail if you'd like. I've mentioned all of these throughout the presentation. I also mentioned staff's design concerns, but they're summarized here. So number one, one, actually, I didn't mention this one. The parallel parking is suggested where on the plans it was shown to have ninety degree parking in the attached town home. There are a few areas in the attached town home part of the development that the angled parking doesn't work very well. So that's going to get, that can get fixed and I think the developers work on that now. I've mentioned the other two pieces here, the sidewalk connectivity and building materials. So the council's options this evening, approval, approval with conditions and denial. Because of the long review timeline associated with the resubmital, we're at the very end of our review period. The statutory deadline for a hundred and twenty days ended on June fourteenth. However, the developer did extend the review period through this evening in order to be able to get a decision from the council. At this point in time, staff are comfortable with recommending approval to you with conditions. There are fifteen conditions that are proposed if you do that. Most of them are pretty standard. Some of the unique conditions are things that I've already discussed, parking, sidewalk connectivity, vinyl siding and landscaping. Planning Commission had a public hearing on April fourteenth. Generally speaking, the public had a number of comments, a lot of them related to traffic, frankly, along Fifth Avenue in in particular, vehicle speeds, those types of things. There is also a conversation about where people can cross to get to the parks nearby. And there's also comments on the stormwater reuse system that I believe was retroactively added to the Inwood project to the north. Ultimately, the planning commission recommended approval, five zero of the comprehensive plan amendment and four one of the preliminary plat and PUD. I do have some example motions for you up on the screen. These would, of course, approve the project as proposed with conditions. Resolutions are in the staff report if you need the number. I would also mention that the applicant is here this evening and did have a presentation for you that they'd like to talk about. So with that, I'm happy to stand for questions.
Questions for Mr. First. Councilmember Holtz?
Lot of information. Let's just start with irrigation. So the plan mentions that it's not proposed at this time to utilize stormwater reuse. Obviously, there is, are in place to the north. That I presume also means there's no plan to use stormwater reuse that's developed on the southern side?
Yeah, so that's a a good question and something that staff did raise through the review process. As you probably know, there's the the regional ponding for this site. The stormwater pond is located just west of this subject property. I, we've mentioned that to the the developer and I I think that'd be a great question for them as to whether they have plans to incorporate that.
Fantastic. What are your thoughts then? Because I agree with the concerns that were raised regarding, I'm gonna stop there because that's a comment. What are your thoughts then on getting people across Fifth Street to access parks? Because there are no stoplights in those locations. There are no traffic signals along Fifth Street at the either of those two intersections. And obviously, we have our new crosswalk policy, but what are our thoughts as to improvements?
Yeah, this is the part where I get over my skis and have to look at the engineering folks, but I think I'd just start by saying I know that Fifth Street North is is intended to be a, you know, higher traffic volume corridor. So I think, you know, some, to some degree, that needs to be kind of understood. To that effect, I know that the city has a crosswalk policy and don't really know exactly how that might impact this particular area. So I don't know if the city engineer has any comments.
Mayor and council, I would actually have to review the policy. I haven't had a chance yet, being kind of new to the role, and come back to you with some sort of recommendations or ideas.
I would, I would also add that because the road is curbed in some areas, it, you know, it would have to be something that's thought through, like a thoughtful suggestion to where crossings should go.
Absolutely, because it, obviously, by the quick trip, you have the curve on the eastern side of this, you're just coming up from a str- a ninety degree curve. Obviously, the the most gentle one is going to be on the western side, but it is something that will have to be addressed and presumably, when the time comes, it likely is going to qualify for a crosswalk based upon the numbers that we have, but we would still have to have a study done to show the number of people. But the problem is, I don't want to have to have a study in this case showing eight hundred kids cross Fifth Street with no crosswalk, therefore, we need a crosswalk. I don't want to be at the point where saying where that's after the fact because we know it's going to happen. I'd rather be a bit more proactive on this one, but that would be my two cents. I'll reserve questions for after others.
Could we, could we add a conditional approval for the crosswalk based on the study? Could that be a condition of approval, you know, if the council discussed it? Is that something that could be added as a condition? So I know the study has to be done, but we have that laid out, you know, what the parameters are, what, and then if, I mean, if it shows that a crosswalk needs to go in based on our policy, that has to happen.
Yeah, I I I don't see why necessarily couldn't be added. The question that I would have, I suppose, is what is the type of crosswalk that's installed and what is the cost? So that we just understand what we're requiring. But beyond that, I don't know if there would be any concern with adding a condition like that.
Because the hard part is when it got installed this past two times, it was based upon study of activity that is already occurring. Right now, there's no people living on the south side, so you'd be studying nothing.
Oh, that's, that's why you do a traffic study.
Yes, it'd be hypothetical.
It's a hypothetical on number of vehicles, number of people.
There was a, there was a, I'll call it like an amended traffic study that was resubmitted with this project that basically, you know, stated that the traffic volumes that would be generated by this project were at or below what was initially projected for Inwood. But, you know, beyond that, I can't speak to the study.
Okay, a couple clarifying questions here. So then with the tree situation, just make sure I'm understanding that correctly. They have quantity wise, based on the acreage, enough trees, but the concern is they're not meeting the one tree per fifty feet on the boulevard. Staff is recommending that they do stick with that.
Yeah, I think we've gotten to a point where staff's pretty comfortable with the landscaping that's proposed. There is, and there are enough trees to satisfy the city's requirements, but to your point, the private drives are, it's difficult to meet the fifty foot spacing requirement with these attached town homes because you've got six units that have, you know, twenty or so foot driveway each with five foot spacing between. And so that's a pretty wide swath of the private drive that you can't plant a tree. They do have trees interspersed between the buildings where they can. In addition to that, you know, staff are thinking that they they very well could provide some type of landscaping that's not necessarily a tree planting between the the driveways. So they they did revise the plans and include a more traditionally designed street, we'll call it through the development, that can and and will through these conditions have fifty foot spacing for those boulevard trees. So you'll at least have one boulevard that kind of runs through the spine of the the attached town home area that meets.
Okay, and then on the buffering and screening, so like on page seven, it talks about the, make sure I'm saying this right. Maybe it's hiding in there. My computer's going slow. But there was the change, it sounds like, from when this was presented to the planning commission to here where the garage door position, location has changed from the front to the the back.
Yeah, that's a a good, a good question. So to just clarify, the city received an initial application in like February that was complete. We processed that. At the first, the first planning commission we had was the April meeting. At that time, we had identified some issues with the design, which included the lack of buffer and there were also units that kind of backed up against the Bremer use. And the plans were then revised and resubmitted. We looked at them with the planning commission again in May. And that's where we had now the switch, the 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 garage doors for the units. Maybe you can see the cursor on the screen if I move it around. The street that, the private drive that runs on the south of the attached town home site, that now has units that have their garages pointed towards the Bremer lot, which
Which is, so that's that Street C that you're talking about?
This, Street D at the bottom.
Oh, down there, okay.
Yeah, so that's where those garage doors open up towards Bremer and it just, you you know, this, the site's not oriented towards Bremer anymore. So it helps, I think, to kind of buffer those two uses.
And then, so then my next question is about the private drives, which on there, I'm assuming that's like Street A, B, C, D, E. I guess if you could just help under, help me understand that a little bit. I guess what is the implications of that? How does that? Like with the sidewalk policy, with snow removal, with tax levies in the future for reconstr- or for, you know, your repairs? What's, how does that work? Are the residents of this property paying a hundred percent of that levy then? How does that work?
That's a great question. So yeah, private drives are actually permitted through a conditional use permit in the city's ordinance. This project came in with a PUD and so we would simply permit private drives through that tool instead of requiring a separate approval. The implication of private drives is, number one, this project will have an HOA that manages the entire property. So all snow removal, landscaping, all of that is handled by that entity. The HOA is also responsible for the long term maintenance costs of the all of the infrastructure on the site.
Do we have any other neighborhoods that or developments that have utilized that?
Yeah, there are a handful. I can't name them unfortunately off the top of my head, but I do know that there are a few that are existing in the community.
Any issues that have arisen from that that you're aware of?
I don't know. I think, you know, with private drives, the issue can sometimes be in the long, long term when things begin to fail. And I'm not sure we're there yet with any of our developments.
Sure.
Simron has all private drives.
Simron has all private drives, okay.
It's working out well. Councilmember Holtz?
In terms of sewer and water, so utilities with private roads, where are the utilities going?
So we have public utilities that run through the site under the private drive. There will be easements for the city to have those utilities running through the site.
And they're going under the road, not necessarily maybe sidewalk, curb?
No, it's under the roads. And so the city engineer had the developers submit a cross-section of the private roads with the application to better, to better understand, do we have enough space, right? Because we need a wide enough easement to ensure that we can maintain these utilities, get in and fix them if we need to. At this point, I believe we're satisfied with what we have in terms of the width of those easement corridors.
In the hypothetical where a repair has to occur, because it's not our street, but we have an easement, how, who pays for the street repair when it has, when a digging has to occur?
That one, I'm gonna have to look at Nate on.
That actually hasn't been a point of discussion. Just as you started speaking, I started, I knew you were going that direction.
I didn't know it was going that direction.
I'm glad you did.
Yeah, I think we're on the same wavelength then. But that's a point of discussion. I honestly, here's the way it works with, when, when, when we are in county right-of-way, we're there by permit, that's a little different. So if like, you know, we need to excavate something, we get into county road, we have to repair the county road or pay to repair it. But in an instance where we are there by easement and there's an improvement on top of it, I'm not exactly sure. That might be something that still needs to get worked out.
Any experience?
Typically, I've only dealt from the public side repairing it. And if it's a private road, I haven't had that experience. Have you?
I have not on a private road, but generally, when you're easing across private property, if you have to excavate to repair, you're responsible for restoring a property. Not having it under private.
I know that utilities generally, if they, let's say it's an Excel buried or something like that, and they're crossing a city street, Excel is responsible for repairing that, right? So.
Because it, my only, and that's logical. That's kind of what I would have presumed. My concern twenty-five years from now is, what if they as an HOA have not properly maintained the streets, we're digging it up to repair a sewer, all of a sudden, are we responsible for bringing it back to where it was? Or if we're actually, we're kind of fixing that section too. And so there could be a cost difference down the road again, twenty-five years from now, but.
Is that something we'd address in the developer's agreement?
Yeah, as I said, that would be subject to the agreement where they grant the easement. We would have to dictate who is responsible for repairing it to what extent. Usually, you repair it to the condition exists when you tear it out.
Yeah, have you run into this before, council?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I have run into it. I mean, usually, it is that we restore it to the condition that it was in, but we could craft the easement so that it makes it clear that they're going to be responsible for restoring it.
Yeah. I think if it's our utility that fails, I'm okay with that, but that we repair it to what it is in kind.
Yeah. Yeah, I have no issue with us repairing it. It's our utility. It's just not fixing it above and beyond what it was.
Yeah.
Right.
We're not there to fix their streets above and beyond what it was.
At the time the repair was made?
Yes.
Could you just also point out on there, I was having a little trouble with the sidewalk, where that's going to be located on?
Sure. So the one area where it seems like there's a lack of connectivity is again on the attached townhome side of this project, on the southeast and southwest corners. See if I can get the cursor to show up on the screen. Having a hard time with that.
Is that? Sections like, what are they labeled, one and two there?
Yeah, if you look at where, so Street D is that street that runs along the south side of the project. Where that street on the west side of Street D, where that curves to the north.
Yeah.
I, it looks like there wants to be or should be a pedestrian crossing. There is a sidewalk that terminates on the, I'll call it the east side of Street D where it curves to the north in that location, and it kind of dead-ends. And so getting folks over to the Island Trail corridor is kind of what I'm thinking. And in order to walk south at this point, the way it's designed, they have to go north. So they have to go around a block, basically around the block to stay on the sidewalks.
Is it, is it the dashed line? Is that?
I'm thinking, yeah.
The dash line?
Yeah. Depends on what dash line you're.
Sorry, yeah.
If you hit escape, you should be able to make it smaller, then we'll be able to see the mouse.
Okay, that's a great, that's.
Well, there we go.
Okay, so where the cursor is right now, there is, there appears to me to be kind of a lack of continuity from the sidewalk that ends about here. And so just punching it through here, getting it over to this Island Trail corridor so that people can go south or north more easily, because you have a fair amount of people that live along this Street D.
Sure. There's the dotted line I was thinking about.
You have great, great vision then.
Thanks.
On the, on the east side of the project, it's kind of the same story. You know, you have a good sidewalk connectivity that goes up to about this location along the Fifth Street North corridor. But how about getting some, getting folks kind of more directly straight to the east to connect to that existing sidewalk.
And with Fifth Street, is there already a sidewalk or trail on Fifth Street?
There is.
Is that on the south side?
It is on the south.
Okay.
So that's would connect right in.
North and south?
Yeah. It would connect right into an existing network.
And then with the crosswalk discussion, obviously, the, on Fifth Street there, I mean, is there a preference too for, I guess that comes back to the study, maybe?
Yeah, here's maybe a, here, in this image, you can see that part of the area. This is an existing aerial, and you can see kind of, that's a pretty tight turn or curve. I'm, without more review, not quite sure where you'd want to locate a crossing here.
Other than Island Lake?
At the intersections is what I was thinking.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, Island Lake is the one where you have the most visibility, both west, north, and west.
I don't think you want to cut across the median and the mid curve.
Don't want to risk that, no?
Seem very safe.
No. So yeah, just, this is just more of a connectivity question for me, and I think just making sure that it's easy for people to get out into whatever destination they want to get to in the community.
Any further questions?
Developer here?
Did the applicant want to say something? Present something?
Thank you. Mayor and council, thank you for your consideration of this project. My name is Emily Becker. I'm with MI Homes. So as Nathan alluded to, there has been a number of changes that we've made since the last planning commission meeting that we first presented at. And before that, we have been working with staff since about July first of last year, going through a number of renditions with the project. So this is the first plan that we had presented at the April planning commission meeting. With the revised submittal, as Nathan had talked about, one of the biggest changes is we have a twenty-eight-foot-wide street going through the center of the development, which as we reluctantly like to admit, is a better design. So we do thank staff for that. That will allow the entrance to showcase the front of the buildings as opposed to a sea of driveways and garages. We removed the stubs streets. We, as Nathan had mentioned, we replaced all the front-loaded carriage product with our city collection, which is a rear-loaded product. So they're all going to be that city collection. We added a number of landscape features, one that's within the center of the development. And then at the northwest corner of the townhome lot, we are going to try our best to mimic the lands, or the entrance landscaping that's within the single-family portion of the development, just to allow for a nice entrance. We did align the access points on the east and west of Island Trail, and we will add turn lanes. This is just to show how the landscaping currently looks within the single-family portion of the Inwood development. As Nathan had mentioned, there were concerns from the planning commission about traffic. Just to reiterate, Island Trail was designed and constructed as a minor collector's street, designed to handle the multifamily portion of the whole entire comprehensive plan of this community. And also, as Nathan had mentioned, we did have a traffic engineer do an analysis of the 2014 traffic study that was completed and compare it to today's numbers and how it would look like with the proposed numbers of the development. And as you can see, it's significantly lower than what was anticipated in 2014. Ranges in nine to forty-two percent lower than what was anticipated with that study. This again just sums up, it's saying that the numbers are lower than what was anticipated, as well within Washington County's planning level. And most of the traffic is going to come from the south, from I-94 and retail, and the west, I-94 and retail. Another point that Nathan had brought up, we do have some respectfully differences in opinions on the interpretation of the legal standards and guidelines. Staff believes that vinyl siding is prohibited, but it does state that it's prohibited as a primary facade material. So we are absolutely willing to make a compromise, and we would utilize hardy where the board and batten is shown. So in this depiction, it would be where the white is. The hardy would be where the white is, and the vinyl would be where that periwinkle purple color is shown. So that's going to account for about thirty-three percent of the front and about thirty-seven percent of the rear and forty-two percent of the entire product. So there's a couple reasons for this, that we're pushing to allow vinyl, at least on a portion of the building. One is maintenance. So with, with hardy siding, it does require to be caulked and painted in order to prevent moisture, which of course causes damage, which then in turn adds cost to the HOA. And obviously, it adds cost to the units, which is going to be obviously passed down to potential residents. It's about $7,000 more a unit to cover the entire building with hardy, which I know is kind of not great for a developer to be talking about costs. But at the same time, it is something that we know within the market that buyers don't see value in it. So they're going to be paying $7,000 essentially for nothing that they see value in. And then there was a question about stormwater reuse with the irrigation. Did I address that? So we did hear staff, and we understand, you know, the importance of stormwater reuse. With the whole comprehensive plan of Inwood, we do have stormwater reuse. We did install it with the single-family portion of the development. I think it took a number of years for us to kind of figure out with city staff on how that could get approved. It wasn't utilized for a number of years. I think it's utilized now, but that was after we left as a declarant. And then additionally, those, these outlots were platted, not considering stormwater reuse at that time. So I don't even, I don't think that there's even capacity. The townhomes don't drain to that outlot. That's to the west of the apartment site. So essentially, I just don't think that there's going to be capacity or even a possibility at this time to utilize stormwater reuse. So I think that was all of the questions that were for me. So if you have any further questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Councilmember Holtz?
Welcome back to Lake Elmo. Where do these parcels drain to for watershed?
I believe it's north of Fifth Street to that, to Pondine, near the park, I believe.
So there's culverts going under Fifth to get there?
I'm not sure. I would have to, I would have to verify that. But I know it does, the townhome, the east portion of Island Trail does not drain to that outlot that's to the west of Island Trail.
And the outlot to the west is owned by the city?
Correct, which we deeded to the city at the time of the master plan.
I guess, I can't recall a time when we had a preliminary plat where there wasn't any ponding at all on the site.
Mm-hmm.
Well, other question would have been, so there's a couple, I wouldn't call them large green open spaces, but if, I know there's the power lines on the south. I assume that means literally both those two parcels, like they're point four acres and point five acres. No use is allowed whatsoever on those.
Correct.
But on the apartment site, like there's a little bit of green space on the northwest side of it. And within the, your proposed design, there's a couple green spaces along the main corridor. Is there any plan for any type of activity?
Um, I believe, I mean, there's obviously that landscape feature that's within the townhome site, that's to the east of Island Trail. We could certainly add benches. I'm not sure what other sort of activities we would add to the apartment site.
I mean, off the top of my head, I mean, basketball courts are not significantly large. I mean, obviously, playgrounds are large. But I would just be curious, like what are some of the small features that can be done in isolated areas? Just because it is going to be, if it's approved, it's a significant challenge to get people across Fifth. And they're going to, whether there's a crosswalk or not. Kids don't, for my kids, they're not going to listen anyway. But we have a responsibility to make sure that those safety components are in place, but they're still going to go there. So any and all opportunities to add assets and features on the south side of Fifth is advantageous and helps for their safety.
Yeah, I mean, we'd definitely be willing to work with staff to add small recreational features within that open space.
Thank you. Councilmember Heard?
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. Can you just maybe talk a little bit from the developer's standpoint on, you know, obviously, the western portion zone for the mixed-use commercial, why the desire to move away from that to switch that to HDR? Maybe if we could start there. And a couple other questions kind of around that point as well.
Yeah, so I was actually working with this at the time of the comprehensive plan amendment that changed that from HDR to mixed-use commercial. I think originally, the thought process was with mixed-use commercial that there could be some more flexibility in uses of that particular parcel. However, since that time, the Metropolitan Council changed their, I don't know if you would say interpretation, or I don't, guidelines, I'm not really sure, but that you can't mix across differently and use designation's density. Prior to that, prior to a couple years ago, I don't know if it was in the past year, but at the time of adoption of that comprehensive plan, you could mix densities across parcels, so.
So it was more to do with the Met Council's interpretation versus?
Yes, it was originally the thought, again, that process when, when that was amended was just to provide more flexibility on use of that particular parcel. It wasn't for really anything else.
Okay. Is staff anything on that?
Yeah, I would add that that's, that's correct. So the Met Council does not allow for density to blend unless you're in the same future land use category. So the apartment side of this project is a little heavy density-wise. It might be over fifteen units per acre. The townhome side is a little bit lighter. They balance out. But in order to blend them, you have to have the same future land use category. So that's part of the reason why staff is comfortable with the future land use amendment that's proposed.
So it would be more for being able to increase the density on that western portion versus there was no demand for commercial units or?
Yeah, I think to be fair, the city in 2014 approved the Inwood PUD and kind of vision. And knowing then what we know now about the Met Council's guidelines and rules.
After this one?
We would, it would have been wise to keep it as one because we would know that, you know, this is, this mix of uses is coming forward as was, as is expected based on the plan that was approved.
Sure.
So we probably would have guided it in that way to begin with, had we known, so.
Okay, that makes sense. Do I have to keep going? If you could, so maybe, I know we had the discussion about the private versus the public roads. Again, from a developer's standpoint, if you could talk us through why you'd prefer to go that direction versus having it be city-owned?
Yeah, there's a number of reasons for that. So, I mean, first and foremost, I'm going to be honest, it does provide a little bit more flexibility and setbacks. That was the number one reason. However, there are also added benefits to that. First of all, from an HOA standpoint, yes. Does the HOA have to pay for plowing? Yes, but they also get plowed probably quicker than what a public street would. So there's that added benefit. Also, we are willing to haul out snow as opposed to just, you know, shove it anywhere we can find. It just allows for better services. And yeah, I think that those are, those are the main reasons.
And how does, I mean, as far as like, you know, early on, when the units are still, you know, you're not at full capacity, how is that covered? The reason I bring this up is a lot of the HOAs and developments, there's been a lot of issues brought up before the HOAs turned over to the residents.
Yep, so.
And there's a lot of issues of the, the things that they were promised getting done, getting. And there's a lot of issues of the, the things that they were promised getting done, getting done. That's usually the situation is early on.
It's set up, it's obviously anticipated in this many number of years, the, the street's gonna need to be replaced or there's gonna need to be certain improvements, and that's all, um, anticipated within the budget. And then we set up the assessments or dues based on that. And then when it's first getting started, we as a developer have to pay those shortfalls to account for.
The plowing.
Correct.
Maintenance, okay.
Yes.
All right, um, do I have to keep going?
Yeah.
Okay. And then if you could just talk with the, the variances that are being requested. Talk us through a little bit as far as like why those are needed. From the PUD, you know, the PUD is intended to be, it's not intended for just increasing density. And so with those variances, they're increasing density. So if you can talk me through, help me understand better, why those variants are needed versus drop, decrease in the, the density.
Yeah, well, I'll start with the private streets, of course, so that I already have spoken to. The setback along Fifth Street, you know, one of the, um, guidelines within the the city's guidelines and standards is that they want, um, buildings as close to the public street as possible in order to create, you know, a better neighborhood. So that flexibility is, is we're looking for. The tree spacing, I mean, as Nathan had alluded to, some of that isn't be, able to be met because of utilities. There is a little nuance within the code that does allow for clustered areas of those trees in the case that there, that spacing is not able to be met. I think, I mean, I think that those were the main.
I'm sorry, did you, you did, did you mention the minimum lot size for the multifamily apartment buildings, was that?
Yeah, I mean, one of the, it was already platted that way and I don't, I don't even know if those standards were in place at the time. And it was platted as an apartment building, in fact, it's actually less than what was anticipated with the original development.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Holtz.
Nathan. So regarding vinyl and, um, materials, and I'm, I'm hearing a bit of a difference of opinion here. But in our conditions of approval and moving forward, it seems like we're still saying there's no vinyl.
That's correct. Staff are proposing a condition of approval that would require the developer to revise their plans and remove vinyl as a facade material.
In exchange for getting a PUD.
Correct.
Anything else?
Not as a question.
All right, then I'll entertain a motion.
Move to adopt, uh, resolution twenty twenty-five dash?
Zero four eight.
Joe four eight. Approving the comprehensive plan amendment request by M.I. Homes for the subject property with the findings and conditions therein.
Second.
Did you say second? All right, discussion. Councilmember Holtz.
In terms of the comp plan amendment, I mean, it, to me, this is logical. It's not about approving a development yet or not, but I, the argument's pretty straightforward. I, I guess it makes sense that if at the time in twenty fourteen, we knew that and what we knew now. So I, I get, that makes sense. I don't have an issue for the comp plan amendment per se.
Was this the same site when we were on planning commission that came with like a four-story apartment building? No, that was different location?
I didn't even live in the city yet at that time. This is twenty fourteen.
No, no, but there was something, there was a council member that was not a fan of what was being proposed. I thought that was across the street, was it? Are you remembering the same thing?
You might remember better than me, though.
Remembering correctly, counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I, I do remember there being an apartment building proposed sometime after twenty fourteen. And that, and people were upset about it, I think it was due to the size.
The size, I think it was four-story or something larger.
I must've been gone that meeting. I literally have no memory.
Of that?
Yeah. I have no memory.
Just to clarify. If you didn't have a memory, we'd, we'd have problems.
As far as for the comprehensive plan, kind of like Councilmember Holtz mentioned there, um, I'm, I'm fine with that. I, I was, I guess, um, I know we've had this discussion a lot about, you know, bringing in more commercials is obviously nice for the city, so would've been nice to see that, um, but that's good, you know, clarity as far as when this was originally put together or why that was and, um, how the Met Council's interpretation of that can make it challenging. So I, I have no issue approving the comprehensive plan amendment here.
All right, well, I'm gonna call the question on the comprehensive plan resolution. All those in favor to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero four eight? Approving the comprehensive plan amendment request by M and I Homes for the subject property with findings and conditions therein, please signify by saying aye.
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 Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero four eight is approved. Anybody wanna make a motion on the preliminary plat?
Move to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero four nine, approving the preliminary plat and PUD for the Inwood Townhome Development. Requested by M and I Homes with the findings and conditions therein.
Discussion.
Need a second.
Now, give me a second. Yeah, Councilmember Hurd.
Yeah, I, I have concerns with this. I just, I can't, I don't see myself voting for, and I, I think I've been pretty consistent with this in any development, where if the, um, density is above the, the minimum limit and variances are being requested, I just, I can't put those two together. I, I feel like the, uh.
Above the maximum, maximum limit or minimum?
So we've had like one situation where without variances, they wouldn't have been able to achieve the minimum.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Density. Right, and in this situation, they're sitting above the minimum density, so they have room to, to decrease it. So I'd rather see the density decreased, not have to ask for variances. You know, again, PUD is not intended to increase density. And it, I guess it's hard for me to, to look at these variance requests and not see it as for that. You know, I, I think there's some great points as far as like, you know, some changes that were made to make the design better. I think those things could be maintained as the density is decreased. So I, that's just where I stand. I've been pretty consistent with that where, um, if there's room for the density to decrease, I, I just, I can't, I can't, uh, vote for a variance.
Clarifying question. So this net density is fourteen point oh six, and with the comp plan amendment, it's eight to fifteen.
Range.
So it's within the range?
And, and so I'm saying they should drop the density and not ask for a variance.
Which variance is, yeah.
Can I just clarify really quick? So yeah, the density range would be between eight and fifteen units per acre. And the, the one standard that I think you're, uh, potentially considering, uh, with the flexibility is for the multifamily dwelling, uh, that lot area is required to be eighteen hundred square feet per unit. And as currently proposed, it's at sixteen hundred square feet per unit, so.
Yeah, I mean, for the impervious cover as well, the setbacks. I just don't think we should be giving variances if the density could be decreased to potentially, and, and maybe, maybe it can't, but that, I don't think that's been shown to us that these have to be, um, implemented to, um, make it work for the design of the layout of the land. I, again, I, my thought is, okay, well, you could increase the square foot per unit by having less units and just make them bigger. So do that before you ask for a variance.
What do you think about the, uh, impervious cover being eighty-four percent per lot but meeting the requirement overall?
I would go back to, I mean, it's in our code, this is the.
So would you, you go per lot? Or would you save the whole development's sixty percent, which is?
Well, if it's in our code, that it's, has to be seventy-five percent per lot, and it should be seventy-five percent per lot.
Per lot.
And I'm assuming that's why it's highlighted in blue is?
Yeah, these are challenging, um, variances to, or flexibilities to discuss because, um, the flexibilities, the need for those arises from the shape of the lot that surrounds each individual unit. And so when the applicant is requesting a setback variance, for example, or flexibility, it's from the, the side of the building, front, side, or rear, to the immediately adjacent property boundary. So in other words, if this were platted in a different manner, the applicant could increase the size of the lots surrounding the units with not a huge functional change to the rest of the development and still meet some of those standards. But they're proposing to plaid it in this way because they want each individual unit to be owner-occupied, but the common areas to be owned and maintained by an HOA. So there's some logic in, at least my mind to staff to the, the setback variances for the attached townhome units where I, um, you know, think the discussion is, it definitely fair for the council is potentially to the impervious, uh, although the overall development meets that. But then I think the discussion about density may land on that multifamily standard that you see.
I'm so sorry, could you, so the, the thought that you were saying there is if you increase the footprint of the building, there's gonna be less shared green space?
Well, in, yeah, so if the lot, so the boundaries of the lots are the, you, you know, they're owner-occupied. So when you, when I buy a townhome, it's, I get the, you know, just the small area perimeter around the unit, but then the rest of the area is open space. That's pretty common for townhome plats. And if the developer wanted to like meet the strict letter of the law for setbacks, for example, a front yard setback is twenty feet, they would just push the lot boundary out. Now, that would create some issues for how this development is plotted and they may have to go back to the drawing board if they were gonna try and do it that way because we've got concerns with, um, you know, dry utility corridors and utility, you know, other utilities and things of that nature. So you couldn't just do that everywhere, but that's why staff have been comfortable, at least to this point, in recommending those flexibilities.
So in that hypothetical, 'cause one of the requirements is three hundred square feet of green space per unit.
Correct.
Does that start to be, when does that start to become an issue if you, again, 'cause it's, you know, a hundred fifty, two hundred square foot less for those units than the standard? I mean, where are they at right now for this amount of green space per unit?
So the, uh, PUD or minimum standards require at least twenty percent open space for the entire project. And that more than meets the third, three hundred square feet for a townhome unit and a two hundred square feet for a, a, a apartment unit. So in other words, they're, they're way over what they would have to do as a minimum.
I suppose on the flip side, if you started doing the greens, re- reducing the green space, you have less of an opportunity for a couple of outdoor activity spaces. I mean, was there ever any discussion, 'cause to your point, there are a couple of variances. And on my end for consistency, so we've approved multiple ones on the impervious surface where it met it overall, but not per unit. Legacy and North Star are examples. But were there ever discussions of it might actually be two apartment buildings? And then fewer owner, owner-occupied townhomes?
Uh, as, in, in all of the kind of concept plans and sort of more informal, informal review that happened preceding this project, uh, it's primarily just been the one apartment building in the townhomes. And just going back to how Inwood was initially envisioned, of course, nothing was ever approved or set in stone.
Correct, they didn't get preliminary plat.
You know, at every point along the way, that seems to have been kind of the thinking and how this would develop.
'Cause it, 'cause in that hypothetical, again, it's not that it's right or wrong. If you did that and you had more density in your apartments than your owner-occupied ones, could be larger foot, could be larger footprint for the building. And it might be potentially a larger parcel as well, 'cause you're, you're shifting more of that population for your ten, your up to fifteen units per acre, more of it in those.
The applicant can just talk to your question if you wish, wish to hear.
Your discretion.
If you'd like to comment on that, Emily? Would you like to answer that question?
Yeah, so unfortunately I don't have the slide up, but, um, with the preliminary plat that was approved with the master plan for Inwood, there were certain, um, impervious surfaces that were allotted throughout the entire development. And unfortunately, I don't have the slide. This was presented at the April fourteenth Planning Commission meeting, but it did show that we're well within the allowed impervious surface that was granted with the master plan of Inwood. So I think it's just an interpretation thing. If you're looking at an individual townhome lot, that's gonna be a lot different than if you're looking at a single-family lot.
Right.
And just more, you know, I guess I didn't bring this up, I was more focused on the variances, but I guess the other big concern of mine is obviously the no stormwater reuse for irrigation. I know, you know, previously we had kind of used the premature development. Is, is kind of a concern of why we, we can't move forward with development because of the water quantity and as a result of that, I'd say the water quality issues, especially with irrigation during the summer, you know, causing us to have to mix wells. You know, I guess I, I see this again as that this would be, if there's not, especially if there's not gonna be stormwater pond being used for irrigation as premature development. I mean, that is, we know that is the biggest use of our water during the summer. That's a big reason that we have to mix wells during the summer. And again, obviously, it's, you know, still within the MPCA's, um, limit where it's, it's safe to drink. But it raises concern with residents. And so I think, you know, I, I know we've kind of moved past that premature development, but I feel like this is the first development that's been brought to us where the openness to use stormwater reuse for irrigation has not even been considered. So I just think that's another, you know, I guess another reason for me, I, I think that changes need to be made, um, to this plan.
So when we talk about per capita use, right? And we're striving to go seventy-five gallons per day per capita. I think that on average, when we look at townhome units, when we get a per capita because of the decreased irrigation needs, because of the density and the, the less pervious surface, I think we're talking, and somebody can call, you know, call me on, but I thought we were talking in the order of thirty-five to forty gallons per capita in a townhome unit versus what it can reach in a single-family home. So to that extent, on the water use, when you regard that, I, I believe that in my opinion, the townhome, um, model helps out the city on an overall basis with the usage of water per capita, right? So that, that, I guess that's a way of, the lens that I look at when I see these different medium-density, high-density coming in versus large family lot and, um, water reuse being used in those locations. That's just, that's just.
No, I, I think that's, I think that's fair, I think that's, it's a good point. Again, I just go back to, right, there is, there is room for them to decrease their density. You know, that could be, a stormwater pond could be put in in place of one of the units. And I, so I just, I feel like I think there could be some compromise there, um, where we're taking away a little bit of the density for some of these features, we, you know, still is like a PUD, you know, we're looking for things that are going to go above and beyond, provide increased value. And again, I think that's been a big one for us with the water situation that we're in.
So if they put in the stormwater pond by taking one unit out, it wouldn't have capacity to be used for reuse for irrigate, would probably very little.
Yeah, and like, this is my, like, again, I'm not trying to plan it tonight, I just think, I think something else needs to be presented. Variances are being requested, if we're not gonna have stormwater reuse and there is density that can decrease. Density that can decrease and still meet the the limit.
Just commenting on the stormwater reuse, if you pick out one unit, it wouldn't provide big enough pond for much reuse, I mean. In my experience, yeah, the both these, this type of use is less water um absent the irrigation requirement. Generally, it's used, uses about twenty percent less water than a single family residential. Because they don't have car washes and gardens and things like that, but I don't know about the, on the irrigation side, I'm not, don't don't recall what. You know, what that decrease would be, since lots are smaller, but.
Okay, any other discussion?
Clarifying question then for Nathan, it, what's being irrigated at the site besides the common spaces? I mean, there's. Are the yards and the yards between the street and the homes being irrigated, or is it really the common spaces?
So I think I'd have to have the, you know, ask the developer to speak to that, but you see, you know, a a fair amount of. Open areas in the attached townhome part of the development, I would assume that, you know, some of those green spaces get irrigated by a irrigation system.
I mean, I, I hate talking about how we can save water for an absolutely flawed lawsuit. That was beyond terribly decided, but is a good conversation to have, cause we're required to. Um, I, you both are correct, look, these units use less per capita even without stormwater reuse, they do. So technically, it brings down our per capita usage as a city. Which in her flawed decision is what she's basing upon is per capita. She's not basing upon total usage, if she were smart, she would have done that. But, so it does help. On the flip side, I can't, have we approved one? In the last couple of years without stormwater reuse. I feel like there was one that we did because it wasn't possible.
At home, at home apartments.
At home apartments, that's what I was trying to think of. We did approve one because it was not possible on site. So I, I guess for me, that is the difference. I- if it was possible on this. If the site has already been designed and platted to shed its stormwater to a different pond that already exists. I feel like from an engineering standpoint, you don't want to change that. That y- you don't wanna suddenly redesign the entire site, especially when the the EAW. Was already done, taking this site into account for how it's going to function. I don't know if it'd be wise to suddenly change that entire design.
So does the stormwater go to an existing pond that has stormwater reuse?
Yeah, I I don't know that I have a far enough zoomed out image in this slide deck, but in. My understanding, based on the comments from the developer just a little bit ago, is the stormwater in this whole development is regional in nature. It goes to different ponds. Apparently, this this site drains to the pond that's adjacent to the single family part of the.
This one, northwest.
Okay, if that pond's used for reuse, then they have stormwater reuse. It might not be for this site, but it's.
It, they're using it on that.
In the overall development. So we have stormwater reuse.
And and on the impervious, I guess it is asking for cons- consideration, but again. My, to, for me to be consistent, we have in the past looked at the total percentage throughout the site. And honestly, maybe this is something that we need to look at from our policy standpoint and how we, how we set this up. Cause we have multiple times said, it's not based upon per lot, it's based upon the entire area. So unless there's a another reason why we have to, that's outside of our our, yes, sir.
Yeah, well, just one thought for you with impervious surface, so um often, you'll have an impervious surface limit for single family. Uh lots, because people will have driveways and pools and decks and things tend to grow over time. And so with this development, I I would have significantly less concern that you're gonna have those impervious surfaces grow, so from that perspective. I wouldn't be as concerned, cause if we have like a forty percent maximum for a single family lot. You know, we're able to review that as as a planning department over time against everything they request in the future.
Somebody's not gonna build another shed.
Well, and they're not gonna be putting in an eight hundred square foot patio in their backyard, they can't because of setbacks, they couldn't do it to begin with.
And the city will be obviously ensuring that the stormwater for this site, you know, that's i- is planned for.
Yeah, I I guess I I remain concerned and I would want it in the DA. That there is uh, the crosswalk is looked into and that there is a. Study is not the right word, but analysis for where one shall be installed, it's not where one could, where sh- one shall be. And I do want there to be some type of recreational activities for kids to do to at least. Try to offset and try to keep kids on the site. Um, but in in terms of. I I appreciate that the requirements do have the reinforcement that vinyl is not a part of this. To me, I don't care what the style is, everyone has their different style, right? We've gone through this before. But there needs to be a style and the initial images that we were shown. There wasn't, there wasn't anything, it was a building. So it, what whatever is gonna be the characteristic, the story for this neighborhood, there needs to be one. Um, this is gonna be a very specific place, they're only HOA, it sounds like its own miniature. Um village, if you will, but uh, yeah, I mean, it is within the fifteen units. They are asking for uh limited uh exceptions, but I I don't think they are outside the norm of what um. We've done in the past, and honestly, to me, some of them are the nature of what's being proposed to begin with. In order for certain these things to happen, some of these are gonna be natural outcroppings of. If you do these townhomes that are permitted, you do this density, it's gonna cause a little bit of a a bumping up against this rule and I. I plan on voting for it, but those specific changes and requirements are gonna be in there.
All right. I'll call the question. And again, my computer, give me a second, please. All those in favor of resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero four nine, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign? Motion passes, three, one. All right. The next one is uh.
Move to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five dash one two establishing PUD standards for the Inwood Townhome Development requested by M and I Homes.
Support.
We have a motion and a second for ordinance twenty twenty-five dash one two, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five dash one two. Establishing PUD standards for the Inwood Townhome Development request by M and I Homes, please signify by saying aye. Motion passes.
Move to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero five zero approving summary publication for ordinance twenty twenty-five dash one two.
Support.
We have a motion and a second for resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero five zero. Basically, uh getting this publicit- published uh for the record. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Motion passes, thank you very much.
Can I ask a clarified question then for staff while we're still on this? Regarding that impervious moving forward in the standards, cause it, what you said makes sense, right? There, you don't want. To go at ninety percent on an individual parcel. If you insert the word or to say like, it's this percent. At a parcel, or this percent throughout the, and it, then it could be that discussion, right? This is that type of neighborhood where this one fits better. No, this one is the one that fits better, so at least then it, we're having a, like, that'd be my thought, but.
We're not comparing oranges and apples?
Yeah, cause it.
Can we take that into consideration and make a recommendation at council, please? Thank you. Uh, we added an item for performance review summary for our city administrator, uh Nicole Miller. I had asked uh council member Holtz to uh upon our closed session meeting. Uh come up with a uh summary of that discussion. And um he's very kindly done so, would you like to read it, or do you want me to?
I'll, I'll use the radio voice. Lake Elmo City Council had a performance review for city administrator Nicole Miller. The council found administrator Miller's performance in last year to excel in areas of communication, leadership, professionalism. Accountability and community engagement. The council looks forward to continuing to work with administrator Miller. On carrying out the city's long and short term goals, continuing progress on employee retention and development. And developing a culture of excellence through public service throughout the city.
Perfect, thank you. I think that does summarize our discussion fairly well. Um, next we have council reports. Council member Dragasic, anything to report?
No report.
Council member Holtz?
The Lake Elmo Airport Advisory Commission had a meeting last Monday and I am one of the co-chairs. Uh council member Cregness is a uh member as well and and join the team. And we had a thorough discussion about noise complaints from a very specific uh neighborhood. There's several thousand complaints from seventeen households. And we also then had pretty good discussion about um what are ways that the airport. Community, which is pilots, it's the MAC, it's the neighborhood, it's the neighboring cities. Can try to increase engagement, education, activities. And so there's gonna be many conversations moving forward. It might mean a council member asks staff if we can. Insert a airport event in some of our outgoing communication, like there's a barbecue coming up. It might be that uh there are additional education opportunities where. The airport or maybe some of the members reach out to school districts to see if there are ways to have more field trips there. They are finishing up a, a place kind of right in the middle with a uh. It's not pergola, but something similar, a viewing place where you literally be able to go there, have a place to sit and you watch airplanes go and take off. So again, if you have a ten-year-old child who loves seeing airplanes take off, that's gonna be the place to be. Currently, you shouldn't do it, cause it's under construction, but like, it's those types of opportunities. Um, I reached. One of the airport uh members, who's a pilot, reached out to chief Kales. Long story short, they're gonna reach out to Bayport first to see if fire trucks and uh fire crews can come out for an event they have coming up. And chief Kales was fully on board with it if a different process happens. Uh, so it's those types of things of trying to make sure that we have a better re- better um. Engagement with the airport, so we're focusing on the positives that it brings and not focusing on um other aspects. I am assuming you might talk about.
Yeah, just wanna address it. Obviously, this last weekend was a horrific instance for. Politics and politics in Minnesota especially, and uh we just want to uh. You know, give our condolences to the Hortman family and um. I've drawn a blank on this, the Hoffman family and uh hope that they get a good recovery. Uh thankfully, law enforcement uh captured the individual and and um he'll have his. His day in court. There's really no sense and no, no making sense of the actions that took place and it. It certainly is uh unconscionable to think that somebody thinks that that's the answer, so. The uh couple of other things that are less traumatic was uh, I was able to go to the. Lake Elmo Farmers Market, it's in full swing on Saturdays from what, I think, eight to one o'clock? In the morning or nine to one o'clock in the morning, in the afternoon, nine, nine to one. Uh, great vendors there, uh that group always does a good job, so. Uh, if the weather's decent, go out there and and get some fresh vegetables and bread and some meat and all that stuff, so. The other thing is that uh, as we like to have the community get together, the fourth of July. Uh kiddie parade is is, as we saw, we had a a consent agenda item for that. I know that um there, the Connect Lake Elmo Group is looking for volunteers to to help out. The Public Works Department and the the law enforcement with some of the. Um, just standing at different stations for traffic control and things of those nature. So um if you are so inclined to uh be a volunteer for maybe a couple hours on one of your. On the, on the fourth of July, I think that would, or the the day before, that would be greatly appreciated. Council member Herrn?
No comment.
No report. Okay, staff reports.
Sure, last night I had the opportunity to attend the fire department um badge pending ceremony and their recognition of their current membership with their families. Um, it was really, really touching to see everyone there, they had over a hundred attendees and so. One group I forgot to thank was the fire department leadership, so I want to say thank you, they did a great job organizing it and. It seemed to be a very good event.
Great, Julie?
No report.
No report.
No report.
Nothing for me.
No report.
Nathan, for the public, can you let them know the timeline for well number two?
For, we're talking about the.
To be online?
Yep, to get online. I wish I could, I don't have that not, that off the top of my head right now.
All good, so, sorry for randomly throwing that.
Not be true.
All right, appreciate it. Uh, gonna adjourn the meeting here at nine oh six, thank you, everybody.